Please stand who reflects them.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, of the great, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Roll call, please.
Mr. Marzullo.
Here.
Mr. Pallett.
Present.
Mr. Shoner.
Present.
Mrs. Nega.
Here.
Mrs. Dora.
Here.
At this time, the meeting is open to the public for comment on items on the agenda. We do have a couple. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Public participation shall be governed by the following rules. Please preface comments by stating your name, address, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. Please be mindful of your statement length and keep each statement to the three-minute limit. Participants may not speak more than once on the same topic until all others who wish to speak on that topic have been heard. Please direct all statements, questions, or inquiries to the presiding officer, and any questions or inquiries directed by a participant or board member shall be redirected to the presiding officer, who shall determine if such statement, question, or inquiry shall be addressed by the presiding officer on behalf of the board or by the individual board member. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, and/or terminate a participant's statement, question, or inquiry if it is too lengthy, or is abusive, obscene, or may be defamatory. These rules may be waived if necessary to protect privacy or to maintain an orderly operation of the board meeting. Okay. First on our list tonight, Ramani Beckett.
Good evening, Ramani Beckett, rightfully placed in Cedar Grove. How are you today?
Very well. How about yourself?
Good, thank you. I would like to go over security, especially that I see two items on the agenda today, V-11 and S-23. Of course, I don't know the details. I'm just going to focus on the previous history that transpired since June and so on. In June, we had a meeting. Then July came another special meeting. There was a July that was decided that a survey was going to be submitted. In August, the survey was completed by August 4th. It was overwhelming. Residents slash parents, eighty to eighty-five percent agreed, Mr. Rosso shared the survey result. That's in favor of armed security. Again, this has been ongoing for a while. We have a referendum back in 2018. Then on 8/30, I was promised that we're going to speed up the process during my interaction with the board of ed and Mr. Rosso. However, I don't see this urgency in processing. And also, I became aware that some junior and senior that leave high school come back and call their friends, come back late, and call their friends and being permitted by their friend without being monitored by the staff or admin. So I think that's breach regardless of what option we go to, where. It's new to me, but it's not going to happen, you know. There is no safety here. So we really need to implement protocol procedure control over doors, over, you know, process and to make sure that it cannot be breached. Because again, how many security staff are you going to have? You're not going to have one for each door, entrance and exit. So we really need that. In addition to that, when we talk about during the special meeting on August 30, the option that Mr. Rosso recommended was private firm due to cost and sustainability and grants and such. And we went over a couple, you know, pros and cons. What's cost? Who's on the liability? Which payroll are they going to be on the payroll, options and such? And the selection seemed to lean towards private firm. However, we did not really talk about the pros and cons limitation wise. So Class 3, for example, will exercise full power and beauty, similar to Zoso permanent regularly appointed, full-time police officer while providing security at public or non-public school premises during operation. That's it. The user firearm by an officer of this class shall be authorized for soon. Provision of subsection B of section 7D L, I don't want to keep on going over the laws, but you get the message. An officer of this class shall not be permitted to carry a firearm while of duty unless the officer complies with the requirement outlined in subsection. The benefit of that, when we talk about cost, really, I think will made it some aspect of that. The aspect is, I think they will be considered part-timer and therefore they're knowledgeable for benefits. So they are post-efficient option. So it's not really that option. So that's one option I want to highlight. The second is someone, you know, the extensive training that he goes through, required for any full-time police officer as a balance. I would, that's the option. Again, I'm talking as a balance, not as a BOD or for superintendent. But that's the option I mean was because that's the option that give me the most comfort, that my son, my daughter, my child is going to make it back home safely. So with that in mind, that's those are the couple items. I would like also to get on the agenda when we speak about the description of the armed force and why are we doing another gap assessment? Because we did gap assessment. I remember our interaction with Dora, that Ms. Nega mentioned the Cedar Grove Police Department did that gap assessment on the outside of the school premises incorrectly from wrong. And a consultant did it from the inside. So every time we delay the implementation of the security for the school, what has happened is we have to redo a gap assessment. And I see this as a waste of district resource. So for those reasons, I would really urge you to take action and to move it faster. And also, in the meantime, until the security force option that's going to be selected, is implemented and put into place, we need to monitor what's going around. So like I mentioned, the student that opened the door for their friend coming in late, I don't think that should be, you know, should not be allowed. I actually got a call from the parents of these children saying, I'm happy they got into trouble, but not for the right reason. They were not, again, the administrator did not know what they did and how they got there. So. Any comment?
So first of all, I appreciate comments. And I would encourage any parent who has information of such an example that you shared tonight about calling and opening the door, to please call the school and share with the administration so that they could address any type of breaches. And I agree that that is just unacceptable and that's something that we love. The administration will have to continue to work on. As far as there, I disagree that there is a delay in moving forward. The board is moving forward and as we proceed tonight, there is a resolution to approve a job description. So we are moving forward as quickly as possibly and efficiently as we possibly can. So as far as having the, and Mr. Rosso can assist me with this, but as far as having an updated assessment done, that is necessary as we move forward. We're not waiting for the assessment to continue our process. We are moving forward with getting the appropriate people in place as the assessment is going on because that's just going to make our overall plan that much more efficient.
Yeah, thank you. One more comment.
Sure.
So recently, the Supreme Court ruling in the case of New York, New York State Rifle and Pistol Association versus Bruin, find it. New York law is to be unconstitutional. So again, this is going to be the urgent, you know, why I'm urgent, this, you know.
I assure you, we have the same urgency that you and everyone sitting here and watching from home have because we all have children in this district and the urgency of getting security in the building is paramount and it's on our forefront.
Yeah, so I just want to finish this comment because that's finding made it easier for people to get a permit for guns and the restriction was lifted. So that's why, again, that's the point, but I appreciate your comment. And again, I didn't read the, did not hear the resolution yet. So I'm speaking as a blindfold on this part. So I look forward to hearing it and seeing improvement. Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Valera.
Vincent Valera, 92 the Fairway. Hello, Dwight. Good evening. Hope you're all doing well. I also have questions about motion V-11, motion S-23. This is the school safety and security plan and a motion to approve the job description for armed security officers. When, I'm assuming that this is a school security plan that was crafted by Mr. Rosso, correct? The chief school administrator, would that be a fair assessment? This is your plan?
It's a plan that is comprehensive between not just myself, but the security advisor as well as the police department.
Right. When was that plan presented to the board for review?
When was it presented to the board? I'd have to go back and take a look and see.
All right. Do you guys, I don't, I would just like to ask a question of the board, Mr. Dora, sorry. When did you receive the final directive?
I can't speak to the date, but like Mr. Rosso said, I would certainly have to go back.
A week ago, two weeks ago, a couple days ago, more or less?
Within the week.
Okay. Again, questions directed to the board, so I'll direct it through you, but please, anyone feel free to speak if you deem it so appropriate. Did anybody look at the plan and did anybody, did it occur to anybody to share the plan with the public so that we could look at it or at least have a sense of what it is? The plan as well as the description for the school security officer, the definition of armed security. Did anybody feel the need to reach out to the community and say, hey, guys, this is what's going through? This is what's going to be processed?
I will share this. What's involved in that security plan would not be presented to the public because there is sensitive information that you can't get out there. So it would jeopardize the safety and security of students, staff, and any type of visitor family member.
You guys are okay with that? You're okay with that?
Well, that's the law. You can't put this information out there.
So the plan in its entirety is classified? I mean, I understand that there could be information that's redactable, right? Stuff that would not jeopardize any sensitive operational, whatever. But the plan in its entirety is a top-secret plan that the public can't see?
It's something that you wouldn't share with the public because it would jeopardize the safety and security of members of the community as well as the students.
All right, let's go ahead.
Okay. Before we move forward with committee reports, I'm going to read a statement on behalf of the board addressing the issue with the musical, "The Prom." The board will not be making any additional or further comments regarding this matter. The Board of Education would like to thank everyone who reached out to either myself or to the other board members this weekend regarding their questions surrounding the high school musical. The Board of Education is and will continue to be the, to be a voice to and for the community. We appreciate those of you who expressed your concerns respectfully and with the absence of profanity and accusations. The board continues to work tirelessly to rebuild broken relationships within our schools and our community. It is unfortunate that we live in a time of knee-jerk responses and are again reminded that we still have work to do. I cannot speak to what communications occurred between school personnel, but I can certainly speak to the actions of this board. The superintendent shared with the board that the concern and the decision involving "The Prom" was with the language associated with the Broadway version of this musical and not for its subject matter. The Broadway version includes inappropriate language, unsuitable for our younger audiences. Further complicating the situation was the fact that, at the time, there was not a high school version of this musical available. The concern of the Board of Ed is with the absence of a policy or procedure which resulted in this, in the information not being accurately or efficiently communicated. It is the responsibility of this board to ensure that the school district and all of its employees are abiding by the policies that have been put in place. If policies and procedures have not been established, then it is our responsibility to direct the superintendent to develop them. The Board of Education will continue to work with the superintendent to ensure that situations like this do not continue to occur. It does not support the development of our children, the development of our community, and the, or the development of our district. At this time, the Board of Education is excited to report that the administration has announced that a high school version of the musical, "The Prom", has now become available and therefore the district will be moving forward with its production in the spring. We hope to see you all there. Thank you. So at this point, we would like to start with our student representative, Mr. Ian Wilson. Good evening. How are you today?
Good. How are you?
I'm doing fine, thank you so much. That's okay.
Hi, I'm Ian Wilson and I am also council president and the student representative, I guess, for also counseling the school in general. So last time you saw me, it was a month ago. It was the beginning of school, you know, getting into things. But this month has been pretty jam-packed and pretty good. Lots of senior nights have happened and this month's have been doing great. As well as that, the fall drama has started rehearsals in a big swing with "Clue", which is going to be a really funny show. If you guys want to come see it, it's on November 18th to 19th. And as they mentioned, "The Prom" will be our musical this year. So tickets for both of those will be going out next week, so make sure you're taking tickets if you would like to come. As far as also counseling goes, next week we will be having a spirit week in which we kind of garner school spirit for the school. And also, it leads up to on Thursday, a homecoming dance, which we are hoping a lot of people go to. Each month, we have worked, we have worked out a kind of schedule almost and kind of etched out our plan for the year with a color run, deck the halls, which is an annual thing where we decorate the Christmas halls, the halls of the school for Christmas. And some new events like flag football, that flag football event in Bay that we'll not be doing. And yeah, obviously, some things have changed. We're trying to kind of go with the times in a way. Each year, we've tried to make lip sync work and it seems like, well, for those who don't know, lip sync is an event that used to be very big at our school. Kind of like a lip sync battle for each grade, but that hasn't been working recently. Just because the culture of the school has changed, and that's okay. It's nothing crazy, but it's just not going to happen. And it's easier just to say that now and work out something different in January. But yeah, that's pretty much it. So thank you so much and yeah, I'll be here next month.
And how did you do on your crowd games test last week?
I did good.
Not a surprise.
That didn't work.
Thank you, Ian. And again, feel free to stay if you'd like or if you have a lot of homework.
I did a little bit.
Thank you, Ian. Okay. So as far as committee reports, I do want to say that on Saturday, I, alone with my family, attended the Cedar Grove Arts Alliance. I'm going to blow the name, but the student arts, it was just a phenomenal event. The weather was just as beautiful as the students' projects that they were selling. So that was really an amazing day. And I want to thank Cedar Grove, Cedar Beans for providing the space and the caffeine because that certainly helped. So that's what I have as far as committee. Mrs. Nega?
Good evening, everybody. On October 3rd and October 17th, I went to town council meetings. And one of the things to pass along is the township tree lighting will be held on December 2nd. I also attended, on October 11th, I attended a personnel and finance meeting. And on October 15th, I attended a historical society meeting. And that is it for me.
Mr. Marzullo?
Great. Thank you. Welcome, everyone. I had the opportunity to attend two meetings, a curriculum meeting, which I think Mr. Palt is going to speak on behalf, and the rec advisory committee. What I want to report from there is that they will be holding their eighth annual Real Panthers Wear Pink Walk, benefiting breast cancer. It is a great event. I know we attended it last year, Dawn, you and I. It was a great turnout. That's going to be held October 20th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Panther Park. They will be making, collecting donations that evening at Panther Park. You can also, for the great cause, drop off or help out and stop in and see Ms. Landoff at the rec center if you're considering donating. Obviously, great cause and we can all, you know, be associated with someone suffering from this disease. So last year, they did a great job. They raised over $14,000 between the businesses contributing to town and the donations made. So great event. We look forward to supporting them again. And that's about the only meeting. I'll be attending the first self-keeping of the year will be Thursday, October 20th. So I'll have some report on that then.
Okay. Great. Thank you, Mr. Marzullo. Mr. Shoner?
I did not go to the North End FSA meeting, but Mr. Marzullo did, and so. Oh, sorry, Palt.
I had to back to school that night.
Sorry.
FSA meeting at this particular building was excellent. My kudos to all the parents and end of the community who supported that meeting. And we discussed a lot of the issues surrounding the opening of school. And as you might well imagine, the idea surrounding security was a major discussion at that point in time and the type of initiatives that the district may be involved in as we move forward. We also discussed the necessary aspects of open dialogue in regards to the effects that the pandemic has had on instruction. It's critical that we begin to move forward to understand that the pandemic has forced students into a very compromising position academically and we need to be in a position as a district to provide them with ancillary opportunities to really move forward with their education. And that is something I'm actually going to talk about in the curriculum that's tomorrow, the meeting we had the other day. Can I continue?
You might as well.
Thank you very much. We had a curriculum and instruction meeting on the 12th of the month. And I'd like to thank Mr. Rosso for making sure that Mr. Pearson, Ms. Barbarosa were there and they did an excellent job staying with us and answering some questions and having a very deep educational dialogue on some of the issues that are confronting us as a school district. The first one was, we discussed their test presentation on the data they presented last month on NGSS LA and where we were falling in regards to state averages and so forth. We also discussed that state averages are something you want to measure yourself to, but as a member, when I was a member of the State Department, we had eliminated what we called district factor groupings and schools were then put into various groupings that were more like each district. And it is those kinds of groups of districts that you might want to use as your comparisons as you look at that data. I think it's very important that we do that. We also, we discuss the importance of the interpretation of data and how it now has to be built into the LinkedIn component that the districts have. Data is great. However, you have to be able to interpret. And then the interpretation has to match up against the standards. The standards then have to be used to see where there are deficiencies, especially amongst our younger students, and help work forward towards removing the achievement gaps wherever we can in those particular areas. So we do have some programs that the superintendent and his team has been working on. I'm happy to report that the WIN program is going to be forthcoming in the district. It is going to assist for students to make up for lost instruction over the time of the pandemic. It's something I'm very much committed to, to getting the assistance to the students and supplement them with instruction wherever it is necessary. The third aspect of the meeting was a focus and a conversation that we had had about the test results of the, and the programming at the high school in regards to our Advanced Placement Program. Those of you who are aware, Advanced Placement Programs have, are a very critical factor in school rankings and how high schools are ranked. It's important to understand that the number of students that sit for the test versus the scores that they receive on the test are all measured. College Boards does measure that. So we have had very important discussions about the necessity of not compromising the integrity of AP courses by reducing criteria for admission and so forth and so on. An AP course is a first-year college-level course and will receive credit if the student is successful. We discussed that and moving forward about students taking the test at the high school. And again, I thank Ms. Barbarosa and Mr. Pearson. They were outstanding. And we also talked about the importance of a contemporary program of studies amongst the students. Mr. Rosso and I have been working on that, that the courses offered to high school students need to be relative to what's going on in the world right now and allows them to benefit from taking that course as they move on, whether it's post-secondary education or into the workforce. But it was a very beneficial meeting and discussions were very fruitful. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Palt. Superintendent, update?
I have a short one tonight. I want to give feedback to the board about the referendum committee. On the 28th of, on the 28th of September, we had a community meeting, which filled it probably around 20 or 20-plus people. It started off as an open forum and then they were broken down into small groups. From those small groups, there were very pointed questions based on the particular need at the moment, which was our enrollment issue. And through that, we were able to condense questions and answers and feedback into a document that was then presented to our ad hoc committee. Our ad hoc committee is made up around eight or so members. Those members are community members. They are professionals in various fields. Some are parents, some are not, but they all have an investment in the community and investment in the issue at hand. Through that, through those conversations, the members of the committee discussed facility usages. They discussed the needs for LRP, if that was ever to be implemented. The 21, sorry, the 2021 demographic study that was done by Ross Haven and Associates, a 20-year breakdown of enrollment in Cedar Grove, the past seven years of enrollment, class sections and class sizes at the elementary level. And this week, the members of the committee will be taking a school walk or tour of our elementary schools as well as LRP to look at the actual, the actual enrollment which is taking place within our classrooms. The intention is, is that once we come back and we gather some feedback, there have been some very interesting ideas that have come out from the committee and actually some really interesting concepts that we have not necessarily had conversations about. So it's been very, very fruitful. They are truly the voice of the community that are bringing to the table some concerns. And I will tell you, I really, I really give them a lot of credit because they really are dedicated to wanting to come up with a short-term and a long-term solution. So the goal is by November that I'll be able to help present to the board some recommendations and some conversations that were circulating around the ad hoc committee.
Does anybody have any questions about that? No? Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Rosso. So under minutes, can I have a motion for V-1 through V-5, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
No.
Roll call.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mr. Pallett.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Hi.
Mrs. Nega.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes.
Yes.
Under bills, a motion for B6, please? So moved.
Second.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Marzullo?
Yes.
Mr. Pala?
Yes.
Mr. Shoner?
Hi.
Ms. Nega?
Yes.
Ms. Dora?
Yes. Under business, can I have a motion for, here we go, B7 through B17?
So moved.
Wait.
Sorry, I apologize.
There is an addition on B9, the last sentence, "The agreement is on file in the board office. The contract must be a form satisfactory to board counsel." We're adding in that statement. Have a motion?
Second.
Any discussion? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Marzullo?
Yes.
Mr. Pala?
Yes.
Mr. Shoner?
Hi.
Ms. Nega?
Yes.
Ms. Dora?
Yes.
Under personnel, can I have a motion for S1 through S17? Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I'm sorry. And we are going to amend S10, which reads, "Motion to approve Chris Canela as a high school's alternative education program coordinator for the 2022-2023 school year," and here's the amendment, "at the contractual stipend of $3,000 and one less duty period." So, it's a motion for S1 through S17 with an amendment to S10.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Marzullo?
Yes.
Mr. Pala?
Yes.
Mr. Shoner?
Hi.
Ms. Nega?
Yes.
Ms. Dora?
I am yes to all except S10. S18 is being administratively pulled. And can I? And can I have a motion for S19 through S24? So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Marzullo?
Yes.
Mr. Pala?
Yes.
Mr. Shoner?
Hi.
Ms. Nega?
Yes.
Ms. Dora?
Yes.
Under curriculum, a motion for S25 to S26, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
No.
Roll call.
Mr. Marzullo?
Yes.
Mr. Pala?
Yes.
Mr. Shoner?
Hi.
Ms. Nega?
Yes.
Ms. Dora?
Yes.
At this time, the meeting is open to the public for comment on items, on items on or off the agenda. Please be mindful of the code of conduct that I read originally. Don't feel there's a need to read it again. So, first, we have Mr. Pearson. Mr. Pearson?
Good evening. Nice to meet you, Mr. Pearson. Hello, Board of Education. I will try and get this brief. I am very thankful that you made your statement earlier about the problem and the situation that occurred. I'm sure that you have received a lot of emails and correspondence about it. My main concern is that the issue at hand, whether or not there was miscommunication, something of that nature, we as the public have very little to go on. And I really hope that going forward, part of the procedures that you put in place is that should there ever be any sort of controversy like this about the subject matter, about language, about whatever it is, that it be communicated much more effectively, both to the staff and to, you know, the public at large. The stigma that this sort of chaos has created is something that I'm very worried about as a parent of a small child in the school system. And I hope that, and I appreciate that the message did indicate that this show will go on and that, you know, there were certain reasons behind it and that kind of thing. I hope that it will also be made public in formal writing because that's something that we didn't have. And I also hope that it could at least be somewhat amended to reinforce the school's hope that the incredible staff you have continues to do the great work that they're doing and also your support of the LGBT community within the school system and the community at large. Beyond that, I hope that everything goes well. I hope that you all understand that when we hear something like community concern, whether or not that was the actual reason cited to whoever was told that this school couldn't go along, that is a term that is very loaded within the LGBT community. And so, that is probably the reason why you have this very meat jerk reaction. As members of marginalized communities, we've been told not to speak up for a very long time. And that time has kind of come and gone, thankfully. So, that's the reason probably why you had such a roar of outcry. And I hope that lessons were learned and that we can all move forward from here on out. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Beckett.
Did you miss me already? So...
Please state your name.
Sure. Romani Beckett, Stell Rattlich, Lacy Hillgrove.
You didn't move?
No. So, I'm going to talk about the overcrowded in class size, specifically South End compared to North End, right? So, North End grades of classes are between roughly 68, right? Versus class size in South End that could go up to 22, 23. The two schools will feed the same middle school, the same high school, give an advantage to the North End student over the South End student. I understand that we're working on a long-term solution, but I believe we need to address it now. Because every day or every year that passes by, we compromise that the student at South End is not getting the same level of education as the ones in North End. Also, the music class combined more than one class at South End. I heard it's three to sometimes three classes at times with 44-plus students in one class. I don't think that's efficient. I came from a third world country, let me tell you, no difference. And you should not do this, right? You should be, we're very advanced, we're the USA, and we should go by with our kids the best education available, especially that we have a budget of $38 million plus that divided by 1,600, low more than 1,600 students, that translates to 23,750 on average per student. I think our students should be scientists by the time they graduate grade 12. We are focused again on LRP rebuilding, which is a long-term solution, which I'm in for all of that. But we must address, is it now by redistricting, so LRP is rebuilt or another solution is put into place again? We have North End, again, is one of the eight blue ribbon recognized in the state. But then South End, on the other side, the teacher is doing one-third and average, more classifieds, right? So, I see this as discouraging the moral lives to our South End staff and teacher and all friends. I work with a private sector. I don't want to be doing too evil jobs, right? I want to do my job and my fair share. Give it the same way they do, so why do I work? I love it. Staff and teachers are not probably trained on new systems or told of new policies. And I'll give you an example on that. Color printing, the district limited to maintain cost, which, that's good, but why don't you communicate that? I believe to the, you know, gentleman talking about the communication, I think our communication is lacking here. And we really need to be transparent with our teacher, not just the community, the teachers too. I feel for the teacher because the teacher sometimes are wedged between the VU, the state superintendent, and the veteran on the other side. And the veteran sees only the teacher, right? So, again, that's not fair. We need to be fair to our staff. And yet, that, I believe by doing so, an augmented search and procedure, again, with the staff and communication, will bring the morale up, hopefully will reduce the high turnover and the quality of education gets elevated.
So, first, I would like to say thank you for your comments. And I can appreciate everything you're saying and then agree with a lot of what you're saying. Communication is definitely an area that this Board of Ed is committed to continuing to work on. We recognize that communication is an area that needs to be further developed, okay? My second question back to you is, are you a part of the committee, the community committee regarding the referendum? Because as Mr. Rosso had mentioned, the conversations are including both short-term and long-term. I think you have a lot to bring to that committee though. So, if you're not already a part of it, it might be something to consider.
I would love to. The last couple of weeks I've been extremely busy, but by all means, use me as much as you can. Volunteer whatever you need.
Fantastic. All right, thank you. Appreciate your turn. Yes, absolutely.
So, Mr. Beckett said that the North End and South End classes are combining for students sometimes? Would that be for?
No, it's just the South End combined.
I'm sorry, South End combined multiple?
Two and sometimes three classes.
Two or three classes, would that be for concerts or would that be?
It's for music.
Music class in general because of scheduling?
Because of scheduling, because of space issues, yeah.
So, one student could potentially have three classes in his or her room at one time?
I don't know about three classes, but you could combine two classes. There are instances where you would have two classes combined to meet the needs of the students and the schedule. There is definitely an issue with space. And the reality of it all is, is that although South End is a larger facility by several rooms, you're looking at an averaging of class sizes that range from 20 to average, I'm telling you, your highest, your high class sizes, 20 to 21, or 21 to 23, 22, sorry. And that's not all classes, that is an average of your highest. At North End here, you have a smaller facility. So, therefore, programming has enhanced and space has dwindled. So, therefore, our music has all been represented through a big harp and moving into room to room.
At North End and South End?
At North End.
It's only on the floor that you can, it's not on the floor at South End?
Because there's not enough rooms here.
Because there's more rooms physically, more rooms.
Can I just follow up on the comment about the more room? There is more room, that's correct, in South End, but the room size, so we're talking class size. I'm not talking about how many rooms do we have. I'm talking that the rooms are identical. So, for example, we have three rooms here, you have four or five there.
Yeah, I understand.
That's a class, but the size of the room is the same. So, but you have 16 to 18 versus going to...
So, I don't digress, but so, to your point, you're right. I mean, you're looking at the footprint of North End and South End are very similar. But when you look at the facility overview of North End and South End, not every single room is the same. You have some rooms that are larger, some rooms that are smaller. And that does, when you're looking at particular rooms with particular classroom sizes, some rooms will feel completely more crowded than another room based on the actual dimensions of that room.
I, again, I think a lot of people brought it up before, redistricting. And I think we should look into this until we find a long-term solution in place.
We are looking at all options.
Right.
All options. You make a valid point, we're not disagreeing with you. We are looking at all possible options, long-term, short-term, and every term in between.
And we need to consider too that when we do redistrict, if there is an older sibling, we make sure the family is in one location too. So, that's another added credit.
I didn't think of that, thanks for telling. I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I don't know, no worries, no worries. I appreciate all of that.
Thank you. Mr. Stringer?
Leo Turner for Higuita Harris, obviously Cedar Grove. I'm going to throw some numbers out here. It sounds like numbers and I'm sure it's, how to, when I'm looking at it, bullet points. Because as a parent, as a community member, that's all I have. I've got bullet points, I don't have details on what we're spending money on. To be perfectly honest, our needs are a good example. We go through, we hear agenda items, we run through items B9 through B14 yesterday. We're not even talking about them anymore. As a community, if we're not reading the agenda, we don't know what we're, what you guys are doing. We just, I mean, one point example, you just voted on something, B9, which is going to bring in $20,000 per month, I believe, at LFP School, for filming a movie for six months, so we didn't discuss it. So, no one watching at home, they're sitting here, they're not reading the details of these agendas, they didn't know that's going to happen. That's a great thing. There's a lot of stuff coming on, coming in with that.
Do you have a question about that one specifically?
No, that one, it's more, I have a question about more budget. So, where is the money going? So, we're spending a lot, going through agendas, which is the agenda list that I polished is what I have. But we see, we know that we spent $488,000 for Boilermakers for LFP, which is a school that we're leasing out, that the future, what we're doing with that school is negligible, is that really, that's a lot of money it seems like to spend on boilers for that building if we're not using it as a leadership. Now, I'm sure there's more behind that, but we're not getting any information. We don't have anywhere to look for that. We spent $204,000 on three new buses, not counting the one we bought last year, 16,000 new buses. But are those available to all the programs? Are they available to music programs, drama, school clubs, or are they available to sports? Or are they just available for the routes during the week? And do we get our money with that? We know we talked about, Mr. Rosso talked about building a fleet. But is that making us money? Are we saving a lot of money for that? We don't know. We know there's maintenance involved in that, we have to hire drivers. We don't have to hire a driver while we lease out the bus companies. Okay, the coffee machines, we're spending $4,000 per month on coffee machines now. If they're leasing for a year, that's a year for coffee machines. That sounds excessive when we're doing most of our stuff through Chromebooks. Why are we printing, what are we printing? It's like we're kind of going, are we going backwards, we're going back through printing everything now? It's kind of, without the detail, as I'm saying, without the detail, a lot of the stuff sounds bad.
So, I think we could answer all of those questions if you'd like us to. I can personally speak for the busing, being what I do in a neighboring town. Bus transportation, the cost for buses is astronomical. Purchasing a bus is actually cheaper than one bus route. So, you can buy a 16-passenger for roughly, can you give me the number?
63,000?
63,000 roughly for one 16-passenger. A bus run for a student that attends an added district placement can run in excess of $600 per day. And that's for a placement that is five miles down the road. So, creating a fleet absolutely will save the district in the long run.
Thank you.
Okay, so I hope that clarifies that one. It's a great question.
But it didn't clarify, when we talked about it in the past, we were talking about buying buses, not how much we're, that we were saving. I'm just thinking we kind of went away from explaining the details of what we're purchasing. And even if some of the software, like the, I'm looking at Naviance, $3,800, that's a great deal to me. That's college preparation for kids. But that's the lowest item we have, that we look like the lowest item. We spent $10,000 on seven mindsets, which is described as online virtual resources for staff, I didn't play this. And that's a soft script, that's a...
Well, the Seven Mindsets is an SEL program that explanation, description, however you want to refer to it, has been shared with the community many times. That's a direct impact to our students, so they benefit from that on a regular basis. So, that Seven Mindsets program is part of our SEL.
So, this number is boost control program, $13,000, kind of interesting. Vanguard, we're spending $18,000 for Vanguard Medical. Do we always have Vanguard Medical or is this a COVID thing?
We have to have a physician.
Yes, a physician.
The school has to have a physician. A lot of these are mandates.
Then we did student data warehousing. There's always been, has been a concern by many people, has been, has raised a concern over the last few, couple of years, is that linking it to student data warehousing as far as the security of that and how well they're keeping that security, what we're putting out there is always a concern with... concern with, with instance, student privacy and student data. That's probably at $39,000, that seems like a lot.
Lincoln is paramount to our academic instruction. It drives all of our, for a majority, as Mr. Palick mentioned earlier. Lincoln creates all the information, gathers all the data on what our students are learning, it is directly aligned to our standards, all our benchmarks, benchmark assessments that our students are taking, gives invaluable information to our teachers. And that's the way to drive instruction, is through data.
Okay.
And if I may?
Yes, please do.
It also provides, provides immediate feedback to staff. Staff can, can through that, understand where their particular class is at a particular time. And it is important, and by doing that, the philosophical aspect of, that you teach students, not subjects, is what Lincoln allows you to do. It allows you to see where the students are, so you teach appropriately to where they are.
Right.
And that's why this data, these kinds of things are invaluable.
Well, is that all the state testing?
No, it's not all the state testing.
These are benchmark assessments used by teachers in a particular classroom.
Okay.
So the Lincoln tells me what you, what you need, and it also tells me what my friend Sal needs. And it may not be, he might be in the same class, but it doesn't mean I teach you the same way I teach him. Differentiated instruction. Okay?
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's, just because to go, I think some of it, at least some of the ones that we voted on, that we voted on, and we just kind of discussed them.
I, quite well taken. And that is something that, moving forward, we will certainly.
I think that is especially proven, Stringer, during reorganization meetings, when they start to, you know, that is something that I had always asked in my district, that, and yet we had reorganization meetings and we were moving those bigger than normal contracts.
Right.
And with big sums of money, that we would give an explanation of what those expenditures were gonna be for, what the benefit to the district was. And I do agree with you on those points.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Valero.
Thank you, Mr. Valero. This is off the agenda, question about live broadcasting. My memory serves correct, we used to have, we used to broadcast live on cable vision, and we had special equipment to do that. I'm just saying that we still have that equipment, or we don't have that equipment? I guess this might be a question to Mr. David, you've been around for a while. When that decision was made, was it a cost effective kind of move to switch to live streaming versus using cable vision?
I'm not sure of the exact cost. I know now we do a box cast, so then we, that's how we, we live stream, so we do live stream these meetings, we can do graduations, we can do a lot of other things. So the, the box cast is more web, or through wifi, so we can lightly bring it to all different places. Whereas when we did the other thing, it was the same one location, so you couldn't move the meeting, it always had to be in one location. I'm not sure what the cost was to that, I think it was through Verizon, so I'm not necessarily sure of the cost.
My concern is that we have a lot of, probably have some older constituents that are used to seeing things like, you know, turning on the TV. And, you know, presently, right now, if you turned on our local access channel, you'd probably see like a tape loop or some kind of graphics.
Are you referring to these meetings?
Yes, I refer to these meetings, yeah. So just, just throwing it out there as a potential thing, like we should think about the possibility of, you know, it's a, we have government access channels, I believe we pay for it, for our tax dollars, so we probably shouldn't use it. Going back to S23, the job description for armed security officer. Can we get a little bit more detail about, I mean, armed security officer seems to be pretty self-explanatory, but apparently we have to have a job description that comprises it. So if it's anything other than what an ordinary understanding of armed security officers, can you guys elaborate on that? What is the definition of armed security officer, according to C-Go? I guess this question to Mr. Rosso.
What is the definition of armed security officer? It is based on, number one, their, the arm that they carry, and their certifications, and how they would utilize that, and what their roles and responsibilities are. So when you look at a job description, you break down what the qualifications are, and you break down what the job, what the actual duties are of that person, and then how they would be evaluated in compensation.
So, I just want to be clear, so the, the security plan is at a call for officers who will be carrying firearms when they're on duty in the school.
So the, the security, the security plan that you're referring to, it gives a wide scope to the security of all the, of every single school and how we operate. That can be altered as you belong in conjunction with your local police department. So the past security plans have evolved from what was 10 years ago to what it is now. So it's a evolving document. But, you know, if, you know, this is something that the, the community and the board wants to report with, so therefore, then you will look at how you incorporate those individuals into the security plan.
Okay, so could there be a scenario where we're going to have an armed security officer who's gonna be on duty in the school, but not actually having a firearm on their, on their side?
No, what the board voted on tonight and approved was an armed security officer.
Yeah.
So the person had a weapon on them.
While they're serving.
That was, that was the purpose of that, yeah.
All right, okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Martinelli.
Don't want to, I may be getting old, not ready, I don't know, I'm saying like words. This is, this is just a general question, pretty much all the questions I had tonight, but definitely. There's a young lady on my block, her name is Stephanie Salem, she's a Girl Scout leader. And just a general question, she's trying to get a permit for the Girl Scouts on a Friday after school hours. She's trying to get a permit in order to bring the kids there, and what's my in on this, my daughter's actually part of the troop.
A permit from one of the buildings, just to?
Yeah, to have access where they can have a Girl Scout meeting. So she's been trying to reach a few other individuals. I don't know exactly who to contact. I did try Mr. DeVita, I know you weren't in today, but I just don't know, maybe you're not the person. I just wanted to know some clarity on who she can call in order to get the information or a permit in order to have these meetings.
If you wanna give me her number, I can, I'll give her a quote tomorrow.
Well, Mr. DeVita, could you also speak to who, like in the future? Just so, who she would reach out to? Would it be directly to you? Would it be to Mr. Bannon?
Well, our position now is, we don't have anybody fill that deposition right now, so we're still figuring out who's gonna be handling that in the future.
According to the law, the permit itself is posted on our website.
Yes.
On one of the drop downs, I don't remember which one, but you could print it.
Okay, and it's handled by the business office.
And you could submit it to the business office, and then, right, that's what I, right.
Do you want to contact for her, you know what I mean, because I'm not really close to this.
It's probably on the permit, is how to actually submit. I've printed, it's been a while since I've pulled permits, but I used to pull a lot in my day. But if you pull, if you download the permit, fill it out, I'm assuming, it's crazy, but it'll say we're submitted to.
All right, fine.
This is office, will take care of it.
I think because we're, we're down at the staff number at that point in time, doesn't mean that the issuance of permit should cease.
No.
Right.
No, she's been trying for weeks now.
Let's take care of that.
And again, you don't understand.
Download, print, or fill out, just submit, depending on how exact you are.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Facts.
Thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome. Okay, next we have Ms. Corso. Sorry for the microphone, relax there.
That's okay, I'll project. Christine Corso, Bruce Court, Cedar Grove. I'm here to speak as a parent. Our family's been involved with the school district since 2003, when our daughter entered kindergarten, through our son's graduation in 2019. I'm here to speak as a volunteer. I happily serve several different organizations that work to provide opportunities for students and support for our teachers. And I'm here to speak as an administrator. I worked in business and education, and I have a master's degree in higher ed administration. And when I thought of speaking this evening, I looked back on my notes from when I last joined you in June of 2019. And at that time, I was asking about the policies that guide board decisions, which you addressed, Mrs. Valero. I'm here again to ask what you believe in, how you define your role and your efforts to support the administrators and teachers who are working face to face with our students, and how do you represent the entire community of Cedar Grove? I ask this because I really don't know where you stand. I see you reacting, not acting. I know what you're against, but I don't know what you're for. And as upset and disappointed as I was with the initial disappointment, the initial decision to squash musical, I'm more upset at how this appears to have come about. In responding to a concern raised by a small group, you negated and disrespected the efforts of students, their teachers, and the administration, who acted thoughtfully and according to policy to bring something to fruition. Our high school has a thoughtful mission statement. Through its dedication to high standards, collaboration, and community involvement, Cedar Grove High School is an academic community devoted to promoting students' self-advocacy, accountability, and independence by providing all-encompassing and well-rounded educational opportunities. I believe there is a decision regarding the choice of show at the high school was made according to that principle. In responding to a concern without talking to those who made the decision, you reacted. There was no policy or mission grounding the decision. It seems to have been done to calm a squeaky wheel. Such a reaction is a disservice and a disrespect to all of us. It appears that you're fixing a squeaky wheel on a vehicle that doesn't know where it's going. And to quote a line from a musical, if you stand for nothing, what will you fall for? I would like to believe, and I know, that each of you has the best intentions for our district and our families, and I'd like to hold you to the mission statement for our school district. But to my knowledge, we don't have one. We have a descriptive statement on our website that is not even a full sentence. Cedar Grove School District, a digitally connected community where learning is collaborative, relevant, and adaptive to the 21st century learner. Finish the sentence. Tell us what you're for, tell us why, give us specifics, make this a district to be proud of. My husband and I have been proud to raise our children in this community, and I will support a board that acts rather than reacts, that plans rather than is distracted, that doesn't let the urgent crowd out be important, that looks for what is best for the whole community.
Yes. That was beautifully spoken, and I thank you for that. And although I don't agree with all of it, as far as being reactive, the decision that, as I said in my statement, the decision for this was not a part of the board to, thank you, to pull the play initially. So we were not a part of that decision. But I appreciate everything you had to say. You make a very valuable point regarding the mission statement, and that's something that we will certainly have a further conversation, that maybe that mission statement should be rewritten. But every single one of us who sit up here are in favor of doing what is right for all students. All students, not some, not wherever you fit on the spectrum of life, but all students. And if we haven't done a good, a strong enough job in showing that, and I appreciate your words, and my goal as this acting, this sitting president, will be to try to undo that thought that you have. And so I do appreciate your time and your words today. And I hope the next time you speak, we have a different tune. But thank you. Okay, we have Ms. Julia. I'm sorry, but I can't read your last name.
It's okay.
Shmenti?
Shmenti.
A Shmenti?
I also can't write.
It's just really tiny.
Julia Shmenti, Rose Tower, Cedar Grove. Hi, I hope you're all doing well. I just wanted to note that I wrote this before the board made any comments regarding the musical, and I also believe that my little speech is still important, to express how important this situation is, and hopefully the board and administration and our community can learn and grow from this. I also apologize for being wordy, I'm an English major. So a few years ago, I was a student at Cedar Grove High School. For four years I spent there, I was involved in all four musicals. I was proud and continue to be proud to have been a part, to have been a part of the Cedar Grove Music Department. With beyond dedicated teachers, crew, performers, and parents, we put on huge fantastic productions. Everyone put their heart, soul, blood, sweat, and tears into each and every show. During my time, sorry, during my time spent in the CGHS Theater, we made kids fly with pixie dust, we hanged a boy on stage. The students have played killers, princesses, nuns, and pirates. And a lot of the plots and dialogue included foul language, sex, murder, you name it, it happened in the musical on that stage. I say this not to point fingers or shame the amazing production crew or dedicated directors. All of the shows the students have been a part of, and will be a part of, have been approved to be appropriate for high schoolers. There has never been a problem with the spring musical before, before this year. These strong characters and challenging themes are not an issue. They occur in the most beloved movies, TV shows, art, literature, and in real life. Canceling the prom will not stop your neighbors, kids, friends, or anybody else from experiencing clearness, which is clearly the issue here, not whatever excuses were given by the administration. I don't mean that as a fact, I just, there you are. Bottom line, the students want to do the show. No one is making them. They chose the show and art form to express themselves, and they want to share this production for the first time in New Jersey with our community. If you wanna be ignorant, do that on your own time, do not ruin these students' ear because you don't know how to be a decent human being. Now, I understand and am happy that the administration did reverse their decisions, and the students are now allowed to continue on with this presentation, with this production. But this action was hurtful and disrespectful to the students, and none of this should have happened in the first place. And it took a lot of alumni, supportive community members, and Broadway stars to help change their decision, not to mention the news reporters. We need to do better for these young people. We need to do better for the community, and these kids and everyone standing with them will not tolerate being bullied by ignorant community members. Hate has no home in the theater, and hate has no home in this town.
Thank you. Mr. Manier.
Sal Manieri, 26 Sweetwood. I'll try not to go on too long, but on the issue of security, it's interesting today what, we have so much more information that comes through every day, and I admire you for having to handle so much more information than we've had to do in the past. As far as security, there was an issue where we had four armed teenagers approaching the school, they were coming in, and the vice principals and principals were told, don't let them in the building. And what they decided to do, they brought them into a secure area in the building. It seems to me, what we need with security is a universal program where we rely on professionals to put standards into effect. You see how each community has dealt with security differently, and they've been criticized and so forth. I think when we talk about security, we have to have a uniform approach, and it has to be, I guess, statewide and countrywide, otherwise we're gonna fail. There's just too much information that an individual has to simulate. If they have uniform procedures, okay, it'll avoid conflict and potential personal liability. That was just an aside, because they saw that today. Uh, that was just an aside because they saw that today. Uh, I don't want to go back, but we have unfinished business. We, and unfinished business deals with two things. Uh, as parents, okay, when we send our kids to the school, uh, we have, I would say, a written contract with the administration and so on. Uh, and that is, parents and teachers, okay, have to work together, okay? They have to be transparent, uh, when an individual sends their student to the, uh, their child to the school, uh, there's a basic understanding, they understand what is happening in the school. As those things change, okay, parents have to be aware of it. Transparency is so much important. Uh, as we deal with so many more issues than we did in my time, I'm not going to tell you how wrong that is, but academic excellence was, took up ninety percent of an instructor's time. Today, because we're getting involved in so many more issues, emotional issues of our children, uh, it is becoming more and more important that we have transparency. Uh, there is, um, and that transparency was exemplified past six, seven months when administrators tried to implement, uh, and start going into the personal lives of our children, okay? We found the survey started getting into personal lives of our children, and because our parents weren't fully aware what was going on, we ran into legal issues, okay? And parents had to take the initiative to bring that to the attention of the state of New Jersey. It was ruled that they violated not only local ethics and state laws, possible federal laws. Now, what I'm confused about is, if we have these laws in effect, who is responsible for implementing those laws? Who has control of it? I, I assume that if you have rules and regulations, that the State Board of Education is required to make sure that they are being followed. As of this date, we have administrators been accused of violating the laws, and we, I don't know where, where we stand. What is, what, what happens to individuals or administrators who violate the law? Where do we stand? Is the state taking up the issue? Are we going to find out what are the consequences of breaking our laws? Am I right to assume that this Board of Education has the responsibility to enforce these laws? These are legal questions which still have not been addressed. Now that, uh, it seems as though we are getting more and more into the personal lives of our children, private personal life, which is affecting them emotionally, it's affecting them personally, it's also affecting them health-wise and also physically. Have we addressed that to our school administrators, the people that are now responsible for dealing with these personal issues? As parents, they are guardians, and they have to be responsible. By law, they have to know what is happening to their children. There is, uh, from what I understand, some states that had to deal with the possible legal consequences, and one state, North Carolina, said they actually had to go to court to address that issue. And they said withholding information from parents is not illegal, which is directly different than what we have experienced here in Cedar Grove. When you don't bring these issues or aren't transparent with parents, okay, you can violate the law. So, the way I see now, with the initiatives that are going on in the school, addressing our children's personal lives, you have legal consequences, but I'm just wondering, has that been discussed with our legal representatives? So, those are outstanding issues, and I'd like to have those addressed, so we know where we stand with regard to these legal ramifications, because not only is the administration of schools going to be held, but your personal lives are going to be affected, that you can be personally liable, okay, for implementing things that violate the law. My concern is, since it's a big issue now, we should be addressing it.
Okay, so, I don't know where to even start with that. Okay, but I will say to you, regarding the survey, the survey, we've moved on from the survey.
I understand, no, I understand that.
That's my turn, please, Miss, please.
Okay.
Okay, we've moved on from the survey. As far as your opinion, and I appreciate your opinion, but there are many other people who have many different opinions. And like I said earlier to Ms. Corso, that it's our responsibility to meet all the needs of all the children, regardless of the varying opinions of the parents. Right?
Okay, I will, I understand that.
So...
But that's not what I'm addressing.
Well, then I really don't understand what you're addressing.
What I'm addressing is the legal ramifications and transparency. When you don't have the transparency, uh, to the parents, okay, you run into legal problems. We see that, and we're seeing it more and more today, when you deal with the private lives of children, underage children, that parents have the obligation to be informed of what's going on with children.
Well, nobody disagrees with you, and we are, we're, we're learning from possible past mistakes, and we are, like I said earlier, that communication and transparency is high on our, on this board's priority list right now, to continue, to keep that communication ongoing and the transparency open.
So, what are we doing? Are we, you, are we seeking legal counsel in the initiatives that are, are...
We have legal counsel all the time.
Consulted all the time.
All the time.
Have, have they been addressed? Have, uh...
So, I, we can't discuss what our advice to the board is, that, that protected information, their protected communications. So, to give you, you know, that, that violates our confidentiality as a board with their legal counsel, so no, we're not going to discuss with the public the specifics of what, of what we address on, on a day-to-day basis. That violates personnel issues, that violates student confidentiality issues, but certainly there are, there are many rules, as you pointed out, that say what we have to tell a parent, what we can't tell a parent, what we can talk about. These issues are addressed all the time, they're consulted all the time on different legal issues. So, so yes, it's happening, can we give you the specifics of our legal advice?
No.
But it seems we have to be proactive. We just can't let these go on without getting the legal advice as to what our, the teachers and administrators...
We are being proactive.
We have to be proactive, and right now, I don't understand what happens when you violate the law, okay? Who is responsible for the sanctions? I haven't heard any, I haven't heard anything from the court of justice, I believe is responsible for enforcing the laws. You have local ethic and legal state laws that are violated. What is the result? What, what is being done?
So, usually when you have an adverse decision to you that says you violated this law, you violated that law, usually the court provides a remedy in that decision. So, usually you have to implement whatever that remedy is.
And what was the remedy?
I, I don't have the decision in front of me, I haven't, I haven't read it today, I'm sorry, I haven't read it tonight, I, you're asking, you know, it should be in the decision what the remedy was, and...
Okay, so, I'll put it that, are they actively addressing it?
Addressing what specific?
Look, our parents spent time, they spent money, okay, bringing this to court. They need to know what, what was the result, okay? Is this going to reoccur? Is there any, uh, sanctions that are being imposed? Is the state even pursuing it?
Can I just ask a question? Because I, I, I'm kind of lost here, I'm not going to lie.
I'm lost, I've been lost since...
You're lost and you're talking, you're confusing me. Are you, what are you, what do you, are you addressing this, what you want to know the decision on the survey, or you want to know the decision at something else?
Trail, uh, when more...
What is the concrete issue you're...
I find that legal issues are being presented every day.
So, you're not talking about a specific legal decision, you're speaking legally?
With the agenda that's being presented today, it's presenting a lot of eagle, legal issues, and North Carolina recognizes it, law, law, North Carolina assists.
But we're not North Carolina, sir.
No, I'm...
I hear what you're saying, but there are, there is no legal issues that I am aware of that are being presented in front of us, that we are actively involved in regarding the content that you're speaking to. Whatever has occurred in the past, that, that, prior to this board, has already been litigated, is that the right word?
Litigated, yes.
And there was a...
Well, I'm just saying that...
An outcome. But we're, we're moving on from that, and...
As you go forward, you're being presented with more and more legal, which we know what has happened personally to the people that were involved in it, we know what has happened to them in their personal lives. So, it has ramifications. As we see that continuing, where we see that administrators are withholding information from parents, I see that as a legal issue that's going to reoccur.
I don't know if any...
Mr. Munir, do you mind if I say something?
Please do.
There are no administrators withholding information from parents. I will share, I, I, and I, Mr. Munir, I'm going to just share this with you, I need to speak on this. To my knowledge, and, and we work very closely in this district with our administrators, our administrators are very transparent with the parents, they're very transparent with the students, they're also very transparent with the community members. There is no instances that I can recall where an administrator has not been transparent with their families and their community.
Well, uh...
If you're speaking about something specifically...
That's not policy, having the kids without them, the balance that the kids were not going to eat snacks. That's happening, right? That's not...
This is not an open dialogue here, it's not, it's just...
I'm, what I'm saying, it's happening right now throughout the country. If you've been up on the issues, okay, it's occurring. That's why North Carolina went to court, because they were withholding information.
Mr. Munir, if you have a specific concern that you want to bring...
Bring to me.
Bring it to Mr. Rosso.
I mean, more than, Mr. Munir, I mean, more than have you sit down with you...
You can't speak on a general, but if you have a specific concern, I will ask you to bring it to Mr. Rosso, and we will address it.
And it all deals with transparency, because we see what happens.
And we are working on it, we are working on it, thank you. I apologize, but I... I don't know. Who signed up to read that's not Mr. Reinhardt?
Oh, Mr. Reinhardt?
Could start with A.
No, somebody else that signed up besides you, you're the last one.
Alex, Alex. Some, it looks like it starts with an A, it's very hard to read, Alexa. Alex.
Oh, maybe it's crossed off.
Oh. Oh, maybe.
Yeah, it, it's very, I apologize, okay.
Oh.
You're up, that's right. (laughter)
Hi, my name's, uh, Mr. Reinhardt, uh, 26 Glen Rock Road. So, I guess the, the first thing would be, I, well, I guess the discussion of transparency has come up, and I, I do think there's some point to that, and not in a, in a critical sense, but we've, we've talked about, and someone raised a very valid point about, okay, buses, why are we buying buses? So, I, I just want to echo that. I think that there is real merit to trying to explain more about why your, your community's having the financial decisions being made that are being made, and I just think that's a benefit to everyone, and if someone sees the trade-off, maybe something the community can propose a more cost-effective solution potentially as well, so I think everybody wins there. With regards to what I actually just found out about tonight, it appears to have been a controversy about a musical. Um, I, I do agree that certainly an explanation is due, I think that, I, I do find somewhat concerning that I think people may have jumped to conclusions as to the rationale, I think people are somewhat, I, I think there's, unfortunately, a, a lot of political divisiveness that goes on with certain conversations, that can cause people to not even want to engage in having those discussions be heard. Now, I think that this is actually quite a valuable point of discussion, though, as to regards to our education and, and what our curriculum is going to offer for students and their ability to ra, readily handle, uh, situations, not purely in a black and white sense, but very much in a nuanced and context-driven approach. And so I wonder how our curriculum is able to help people deal with what I'll say, and this is, I'll quote, not quote, I'll take something from what an assistance engineering conference was discussing, that history is very much driven by this moral arc, right? And things move through various actual moral consensus regions. And so, how, how are we really teaching the students to grapple with these extraordinarily complex issues, these evolving issues, and being able to deal with the fact that these issues do not exist statically as some higher existential elements, but actually have temporal and spatial relevance as well? Because we're seeing it right now, it's clearly there's divisiveness, but they have to be able to sort through, make those decisions, and really reason about these things, and they have to be able to engage those, what do we say, um, potentially divisive, um, points. I don't know if that's somewhat over, over complex, but I at least would consider it something we're thinking about, this clearly needs to be addressed, uh, for them to be fruitful members of society.
Agreed. So, appreciate your comment. Thank you.
You too.
Okay, that closes the portion of public comment. Now, it's been a future meetings, so there was a, there is a change of date for the next meeting. It was originally November, November sixteenth, it's now November seventh, times remain the same, um, and the next meeting will be at Souten. Right, so November seventh, uh, six thirty exec, seven thirty regular meeting.
Uh, just question that, I know that the website has been under construction, has that been finalized?
Yes.
With all the information?
Yes, meeting adjourned. Can I, uh, push it?
Not so quick, easy.
The meeting! So moved.
Second, third.
adjourned.